Okay, uh, we'll call this City Council Workshop to Order, Monday, September 27th, 4:00 PM, roll call.
Nicole Andrew.
Tom Marslock.
David Paradise.
Sam Solars.
Kirby Moyno.
Jessica Manuel.
Park and Rec Commission Changes Discussion. Uh, so we have the current bylaws and the city ordinances in front of us regarding Park and Rec. Uh, what are our thoughts?
Well, I think we need to rescind the resolution that allows non-city residents to participate in Parks and Rec because, you know, you have people that aren't paying taxes in the city that are making decisions on how the city spends money in parks and trails. So I just don't think it's a good representation.
One thing that I would look at honestly is the, at least three members. I think more gets done if there's a minimum of five. I think there's more voices, more discussion, especially if people can't make it to a meeting, there is no meeting then. Um, so I think that that needs to be looked at as well.
I know there was something that was put in there because they've always kind of had issues with getting people to join Park and Rec. Um, so it's kind of just one of those minimum things, just so that they make sure that there's always a commission going on. But yes, I mean, it's pretty uniform from some of the other cities our size that they require to have five.
I, I think that there's enough interest in this now, uh, with everything that's gone down, and I think that we can get that in that way. You know, if there is a reason for somebody not being able to make it, they can still sit down and meet and get, get stuff done that needs to be done. You know, I think that's the main thing. It's when you come in, one person's 15 minutes late, you're sitting there waiting, going, "We need an end of this meeting." Uh, I think that that would make a more clear directive that we, you know, are putting forth and what our expectations are forward as well. Well, the other thing that I think Nicole can answer this, since she is VP of the Montrose Days, is trying to find a way where we are having our Parks and Rec department focus on park and trail, upgrading those facilities, all that kind of stuff, and having Montrose Days kind of filter in to Park and Rec, um, to be able to put on the events that we always talk about, so that they're focusing on maybe summer splash and October, you know, Halloween decoration, Christmas decoration, so on and so forth, and using those funds, and also maybe even to get a couple of funds from Park and Rec to go towards Montrose Days as well. Um, have somebody on the, on the Park and Rec Committee kind of be that director of that communication with Montrose Days.
Like, still looking together, which I think, I think it's a good idea. Um, the only thing that gives me pause about it at the moment is the fact that we are bringing on, everybody's new, um, is to let them get their feet wet with, with everything that's going on right now. But I'm totally up for a discussion on merging the two and helping all those events. So that's definitely a possibility.
And that's something that, uh, I was talking to, uh, the Mayor Hanover recently, and they had said their Park and, Park Board, but it's the exact same as our Park and Rec Commission, that, uh, they help out with their Harvest Fest stuff. I don't know what capacity, um, but I know that he had said they help out with that, and then they do a couple of events along the year, um, either to raise money and/or to get people out and about. But, uh, that was one of the things that they do is they help out with that.
Cause I think if you can utilize the food truck, the, you know, summer splash, we could turn that into a fundraising event for Montrose Days, you know, as a way to make sure that they have enough funds to get it going, cause I think we all want that back. I think we all want the, you know, good events back, and I think that a committee that is putting on a bigger event will know how to do some of the smaller ones, so that our Park Board doesn't have to necessarily worry about the day-to-day function of what they need for that event. They can help guide them, give them, you know, come to us with what the budget should be for each one, but then they can tell, okay, this is what we have to work with.
Yeah, it's a good idea. It's definitely a good idea. Like I said, I just, with the new board, I want to make sure that everybody gets in, gets settled into their positions and stuff, and it might be something that we, that we bring up on, you know, how do we merge the two, the logistics of it, the ins and outs of it. It's a good idea.
Yeah, define merge.
I mean, I guess if, if, just thinking about it right now, is if Montrose Days was to come in and help Park and Rec more or less with those events that they throw, so that they can focus more on the parks and trails, but they could be there, you know, they're there too, um, maybe helping out with it in a way. It's just more of Montrose Days throwing the events, so it's not, not their, their number one concern.
So Montrose Days would theoretically use Park and Rec as the, uh, facility to get funding from the city for those events, right?
I, I would suppose so. Let me clarify logistics of it, because Montrose Days is 100% fundraising on even how we throw Montrose Days. There is really no profit.
Right.
Therefore, we really don't have a bunch of money to throw events just, just because, um, because we need the money too for Montrose Days. So it's, there's, there's a lot that would have to be discussed about it, but I think it's something that can definitely be discussed.
Yeah, I think, I think merge would have been, you know, not the right word, kind of more like a partnership type deal versus, you know, merging the two. I think more of a, kind of a hand-in-hand type deal would be.
Because then for those events, then you have, you know, those park members can obviously volunteer and help out, but it becomes more of a focus on Montrose Committee putting on the actual event and securing everything that needs to be secured, going to Park and Rec like, this is what we have for what we need. Can we get that on the budget? Then Park and Rec comes to us. We can make that happen. You know, I think that just becomes a streamlined thing where you have people that are dedicated to putting on events and, and making the city fun and community-oriented, whereas we have another group that's focused solely on what, what needs to be done and keeps, keeps them go, yeah, keeps them going strong, where they don't have to worry about, oh, did we get ahold of this vendor? Did this get done? Did this get done? Like, that's, we, we leave that to the Montrose Day Committee to, to help put that together.
It's definitely worth a discussion.
Have you talked at all to, uh, Bianca Urban?
I haven't physically talked to them. Christina did the communicating with them. Um, is there anything in particular?
No, I'm just saying, you know, cause they put off events, um, you know, the 5K run and all that kind of stuff. I don't know if they'd, if Montrose Days would be interested in communicating with them to work, work some of these events together too. You know, it's another set of volunteers, you know?
Definitely.
So, just a thought. Cause they seem to struggle a little bit putting things together.
I guess you guys need to decide if you want event planning and event throwing to be part of Park and Rec or what you would like to see that, um, be going forward. Um, cause one of the problems we did have with recruiting people to be on Park and Rec is that they get burned out because the events are a lot and, um, and then they, they just won't stop. So, um, you have to think about that kind of stuff.
Yeah, in my opinion, I think, uh, that, as we discussed before, is that the, Montrose Days is a volunteer organization, right? Volunteer organization would funnel the ideas and requests for dollars through planning and zoning and then up to the city council. And be a, it's basically a separate entity, you know, um, through, that way-
Parks and Rec? Parks and Rec, right?
Yeah, what did I say?
Planning and zoning.
Yeah, I know, Parks and Rec, yeah.
Cool, start with that.
You know.
Yeah, I know who you're talking about.
Cause not everybody who has historically been on Park and Rec necessarily wanted to do the events.
And that was the biggest, you know, struggle that I know that Ashlyn had, was that she had one committee member that wouldn't ever volunteer, always had something going on. So you have two people trying to put this on, it doesn't work. You know, they're doing-
One of that, like, sort of forced volunteer work.
Yeah, and like, and you know, you, Ashlyn was, was trying to get that to happen and was doing her damnedest to make it work, but I think that's something that if we have a full-on volunteer committee that can handle that, then that takes the burden off of this group, you know? We don't want them to burn out. We want them to go look at our parks, what do we need fixed? What do we need to, to use some of these funds for?
Where's the money, where's the money get spent?
Yeah.
How many people are on Montrose Days?
There's seven of us now?
Seven?
Yep.
That's good.
Now, they're full now after last night.
That's good.
Pretty good turnout.
Fifteen, fifteen people shot up last night. You know, it was a good, it was a good turnout. And I think that, that, like, that shows me that there's an interest to do more, to make more things happen in town event-wise.
Yep.
And if we use it correctly, now we can help them fundraise a little bit more too on top of that.
Yeah, cause there's always been an issue with volunteerism, you know, so.
Yeah, Christina Oswald, she resigned after last night, but she is going to stick around to help the two new girls, cause Christina was the treasurer and secretary. Now she's going to help the two new girls on transitioning into their roles, which I'm super thankful for. And so just throwing them in, same good luck.
Yeah.
Oh, here you go.
Yeah.
I know there was a time where I think Christina was trying to, uh, connect to Bianca Urban for the 501(c)(3) piece of it, and, uh, you know, that gets really dicey, really complicated and, you know. It's not, it's not an easy thing to do.
I, I think there's a balance that they could have, where they could put on those, those few events every year that get people out into the parks to participate in some of those things. I think there's a balance that they could have, as long as they're, you know, they, they stay focused on the stuff they need to, but as well as bringing the events. Like I said, when I talked to the, the Mayor Hanover, he had said that they, they, they like their events there, that their, their park commission puts on, but, um, you know, they only have three that they do, and then they help out with their city festival, Harvest Fest. So I, I think there's, there's a way that they could do it and do both without burning people out, but.
Are you saying throwing a couple of events instead of, what is it typically? Park and Rec? They have summer splash-
Skate day, Easter egg, uh, the food truck, then they do the decorating, two decorating contests-
Halloween and Christmas.
Traditionally also did the, um, tree lighting, right?
So would we have to redefine, redefine recreation functions in C1? Cause recreation functions could mean anything. Do you want to put in there something about working with, um, Montrose Days?
We, I mean, if we're doing that, we could put a general volunteer committee within the city. So unlimited. But I mean, I think if they had a defined set of, these are the three events that they plan and host, and then they work with the other events with the Montrose Days or Bianca Urban or the Lions, who I know want to get more involved in some stuff.
Thank you.
So you said, you said, if I understand correctly, you're saying Parks and Rec would still do three events a year?
I think one a quarter would be-
Independent of what Montrose Days is doing? You'd rather do that than have a volunteer organization pull it together?
I don't, we don't even know if they'd be interested in it, but I know that if we had those set events and they were even listed, and when they were approximately going to be, whether it's the third weekend in January, the third weekend in July and Easter, I mean, and then whenever for the, the Unite, the Night to Unite stuff, um, I, I think they could handle three, four events in a year with, without any problem.
Providing that, that the focus doesn't become those four events a year and everything else gets dropped.
I, yeah, I, I think that they can do it as long as they stay focused on, on the, the park stuff, that they could also do the recreational stuff without an issue, as long as they stay focused. I mean, it just, it requires, you know, the, the people that, that would want to do that as well as, you know, staying focused and staying on task with the stuff.
What events would we be talking about?
We're talking like four.
I mean, I would think- You could do maybe both decorating contests. That doesn't really, I don't think that takes a whole lot of-
That's a drive around and-
Right.
About three hours.
Doesn't require a whole lot of pre-planning unless you're, I mean-
Yeah, the, the city puts it out and then-
Yep. You know? And then, you know, something further in the year. Two months earlier in the year or?
Uh, summer, summer splash.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're thinking about certain events, I think Easter, summer splash, and then the, the contest, the decorating contest, I think would be, would be good. It's not overwhelming.
I don't think so.
And I don't think the, the skate days, I think that's a good thing to get people out to the hockey rink too, just depending on if-
If weather-
If, yeah, I mean, which, we can't seem to get a decent January. It's always end of February, March, when we actually get freezing weather and just-
Well, I think if we're going to have Park and Rec take on any events, they should be defined, rather than, you know, they should, we should define, define what they look like, what it is, so that it's in the, in their bylaws. They know what has to be done. They know deadlines, they have this and that, so that we're not scrambling around trying to put it together.
Right, at the last minute, yeah. I'm good with that.
So which ones do we want in the bylaws? The Easter egg hunt, summer splash, and the decorating contest?
I would agree with that.
And then skate day can be an optional thing if they want to do that? I mean, you can still have-
I think that's a, I think that's a great thing for, personally for Montrose Days, for a fundraiser activity, skate day in the wintertime, you know, get some hot cocoa out there and whatever, have a little air, reason to, to raise some more fundraising dollars for Montrose Days. So I think that's, last night's meeting was evident that the funds are hard to come by. The fundraising is tough, so let's find a way to, to help that organization get that done, so that we-
Cause they can directly fundraise.
Exactly, exactly, yep, yep. And so that way, we can ensure that we can have a Montrose Day year over year, because they can know, okay, we got, we got this thing coming up, we're going to make X amount. This is another thing to our, to our bucket list, you know?
And that they know they can still come through Park and Rec and request donations as well.
But that way it strengthens that relationship there, and maybe you can garner a few more extra volunteers when needed.
How do you make money on skate?
That's, that's for Montrose Days, figure.
Donations or what?
Donations, can, well, they usually do like a-
Do you want a little insight on any of it?
You can do like a little puck toss or something like that, a dollar a puck, closest to a bucket, whatever. There's ways to make money.
That's called chuck-a-puck.
Yeah, chuck-a-puck, there you go. I mean, there's ways to do it.
We gotta hire those two enterprising men that were in the, um, gazebo selling lemonade for two bucks a cup. He goes, "Do you want a full cup or half cup?" I said, "Well, a full cup." He says, "That's $2." I said, "$2? I said, "Where's your gun? Are you holding me up?" Geez.
There was one of those-
Supply chain.
There was one of those school fundraiser candy bar things. I was eating at Dave's the other day, and a little girl came in the back, and every single table after they're done eating was like, "Yeah, we'll, we'll take five, we'll take six." It's like, oh gosh, it's-
Have to go drop off, you know, buddy's truck to get his windows tinted, his kids are outside selling candy and stuff like that. And, you know, he's like, "Yeah, I'll take five Twizzlers." She's like, "That'd be $10." Five Twizzlers for $10.
Future government employee.
Okay, so we're going to take out in the bylaws and amend the ordinance to say nobody from outside of town, is that, is that okay?
See, that's my, my opinion, yeah.
Everybody agree with that?
I'm good with that.
And then, at least five, right?
Five members?
Five members.
How, how do we get it out there?
Get one out there.
How are we?
Um, well, we can talk about it at the meeting in October, and then kind of Christie puts something out on, on social media and stuff, website.
They book the paper.
I think, I think it's a direct, direct link on social media, like, here's the application, same thing with the website, newsletter, obviously. We should have applications set up on the table for every meeting too, just in case people show up.
I have a draft date on that too.
Yeah, cause we want to, we have to, when do we have to get this back up and running, Jess? Is there, is there a deadline?
I would like to see it at least for January.
Okay.
Been wanting to figure out the Halloween and Christmas decorating.
Yeah, I still think we-
I think it would be advantageous if us as a group, including everybody here, um, was a part of that.
We would.
And so that way Sam can't win. My methane motivation on it.
We're just going to avoid him.
But I think, I, I think the more that, again, the more that we can do as a group here and as, as the city workers to get out there in the community, the better it is for this community.
I agree with that. I can help.
So what, do we want to put out there that we'll start accepting now?
Yeah, we can accept applications now.
Start accepting now, and then it'll be, the, the members and everything will be put on, uh, November, right? The November meeting, we would vote on that, or would we call a special one at the end of?
Vote for what?
Who's on Park and Rec? If we start accepting applications now, when would we?
Uh, depends how many we get.
Okay.
And how quickly those come in.
Could we also, would it be possible to add a line or in the comment section or something, just, um, for, for people to put on their, uh, a, a day of the week that would work, work best for them in case there might be three people that want to join, but they can't make Thursday's work, but they could make Tuesday work, and then other people also have Tuesdays.
Yeah, we've changed it before, so.
That's a good point. Yeah, so that they would kind of have control of the, the day and time, and then-
As long as it was consistent.
Yeah, and then they could all, once, once the group gets together, then it would be, they can put a finalized one, and we can put in our yearly schedule, or monthly schedule.
Okay, so besides the people from outside of town, I don't know that the ordinance itself needs to be changed. Uh, we can change the bylaws and make all those updates. So what I'm hearing is, so members shall consist of at least five, but no more than seven people. Um, members should be residents of the city. We're in a strike that except for two members can be get from outside. Um, all members must be eligible to vote, blah blah. And then I'll probably add a section at the end of membership to include the events that we just talked about. Are there any other changes?
Well, I was thinking about that. What if you get, um, like, a couple of high school girls that are really interested in doing something in the community? I know we have a struggle getting high school age people involved in anything in the community, but what if you had a couple of kids that would be interested? The, the voting piece kind of shoots that, you know?
I think we can have student liaisons, but they're not a voting position. Same thing with, like, council. So if there are people that are interested, yep, they can join and so we can, you know, share their-
Maybe they could have joined, uh, Montrose Days Committee or whatever.
Is that something we can add to the, like, the listing that we put out there? Like, maybe student liaison?
Does, is, is there a requirement that says that they have to be a voting age? Is there a state statute or something?
I think there is, cause it says it on all of these things. So do we want to see any other changes?
Uh, the public comment policy during meeting discussion.
So in your packet, I included our current policies, both for open forum and for request for, uh, council action. So you can make changes to those, we can replace these. Um, this is sort of what is on file right now, so, um, you know, we do have policies on file. So I don't know if you want to change them. I did put that article in there, and then a couple of samples from what other cities do to kind of inform residents about what the policy is. I don't know if we just need to do something like that, um, and then just enforce what we do already have.
Well, and when we, when we had that, the Lady Minnesota Training, um, I, I personally really liked her idea of the request for council action, where they go to, um, a separate committee first of kind of like an agenda setting type of committee that-
It's just, that'll be hard because of the time, cause it's usually, they have to be submitted, I think, by Tuesday before the meeting, and the packets go out Wednesday or Thursday. So it's just, I mean, is someone going to come in here on Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday morning and, and decide if there is council for, uh, request for council action forums?
Yeah, I think you can delegate to whatever commission that needs to be delegated to, you know, at, when they present their case, you know, I, I'm in favor of having all their, uh, applications for open forum in before the meeting starts. Once the meeting starts, it won't be any more accepted, okay? Um, and then they present their case and say it's a planning and zoning issue, you know, neighborly dispute kind of thing. You can refer that to planning and zoning, you know? You don't have to make any comment at the meeting. You can thank you for your time and-
Well, it's something that staff needs research or anything like that, you know, thank you, and we'll, you know, what she said at that meeting, um, about like reports or like circling back to things from a previous meeting, if people had questions or if there was something we needed to research, we could circle back and, and talk about it at the next meeting. Um, but yeah, request for council action, I mean, that's up to you guys, how you want to handle that, cause it's up to you what goes on the agenda and what doesn't, so.
Yeah, I, I get that that'd be, be hard. I just, you know, like I said, that's, it's 15 days, right? Beforehand the day?
It's like the Tuesday before the meeting.
Yep.
I just can't really push that out. I mean, you know what I mean? To have more time?
I, I just think it would help with some of the, some things that get brought up that could be dealt with, um, you know, even at City Hall, if, if they came up here and asked a question and, and a couple council members were here with, with city staff, that they can answer the questions and, you know, maybe most of the issues would get taken care of beforehand, but.
Well, I go, I go back to the few that we've had recently. I mean, the, the water issue with, uh, the old, you know, trying to catch up on this bill. Um, we had all the info, and it made for an easy, we, you know, in the packet, here's what's going on, here's a situation. Like, as long as we're getting all of that information with it, I think I'm good, because at least I can go in there without being blindsided by what exactly they're looking for. So as long as it's detailed out, as long as we get info from, you know, whoever in, in the city has that information, as long as that's part of the request that's put in by, by somebody, that at least helps guide where that discussion's going to go for us, as far as where we think it's coming from, and then also gives us the background on anything.
Yeah, it is a rare occasion.
It, it is rare, but it, it definitely like, you know, Christie did a great job of that, where we had it all lined up, and we were able to, when we got our packets, look that over ourselves and kind of have, you know, at least a good understanding of what the issue was.
Yeah, cause normally when a person fills out an open forum, I mean, you see topics to be presented. There isn't a lot of place for them to really, um, expound on what their issue is. Yeah, because normally when a person fills out an open form, I mean, you see topics to be presented, there isn't a lot of place for them to really, um, expound on what their issue is. It's usually a couple of sent, uh.
A request for council action is a different.
Yeah, request for council's different, yeah.
So, otherwise, I mean, can, you know, if, if we do get requests for council action forms, you know, we can forward them to you, and you can say yay or nay, you want it on the agenda, yes or no, to all of you guys, and you can kind of make that decision and respond back to me individually. I don't know, I mean, it's just, it's hard because of the time, otherwise if you want to change the time, but then you're makes it harder for the residents to bring out the current issues, you know?
That's, I mean, that's, that's why we're here, is, is we're here to make sure we're resolving issues, and so I don't want to, I don't want to make requests for council action, something that maybe somebody's going to look at and go, oh, they may jump through seventeen.
Right, you have like two months to make a re-.
Like, I, I don't, I don't want that to be a thing either, because then it looks like we're not trying to actively fix any issues that we don't.
Well, yeah, I mean, and my thought, when, when she brought up the, the separate committee that looks at some of those things, you know, that it can be a, a set time that, you know, when, when Jess is doing the agenda, that Tuesday before, we don't have anything, you guys don't have to come in, whoever would be on it, but.
Yeah, like, or Tuesday at two o'clock before the meeting, whoever comes in, looks at what we have, says yes or no, number done. Otherwise, yeah, if we don't have anything, obviously those people wouldn't have to come in, but.
You don't get a whole lot, do you?
No.
Just from time to time, but I just, you know, for some of those ones that, you know, like I said, sometimes they could be, yeah, I mean, that one obviously would have to come for a vote, but, you know, sometimes the other ones.
Some of the stuff could be handled at the staff level.
Yeah, that they could be able to have the, the questions answered, or. But, yeah, I mean, I'm fine with keeping it the way that it is.
I think it's a good thing to look at it, and if we move forward and we have, you know, back, a backlog of stuff.
Start letting you guys know if we do get them, and then, you know, see what you think, um, and if we want to discuss it. Otherwise, yeah, I think we can just keep it the same, I mean, the policy's the policy, it's, um, pretty clear.
And, and if we go that route too, you know, you let us know, and we have an answer for them, as long as we're being able to communicate back to them, like, hey, you don't need to come, here's, here's a solution to it, or whatever, here's the answer you're looking for.
Yeah, and then open forum, um, I mean, the, the form that they fill out actually says, you know, limit your presentation to three minutes or less. It kind of gives them all rules that they need to abide by, so, you know, I think if we just enforce this and, and have them submit it before the meeting starts, you know, I think it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, open forum, I think we need to understand.
Just tighten it up a bit.
Tighten it up, but even on our end, we need to understand this, what's not a discussion back and forth, it's.
Right.
We're here to listen, we're here to listen, so give them their three minutes, don't interrupt.
Yeah, we looked up a timer, are we going to do?
I have timers there.
Oh, you do, okay, good.
Do, do they display for them to see?
Um, we can, they're, they're little, I mean, they're like this big, but it's like a digital timer and it comes down, so.
Any further discussion on the public comment policy? Street sign replacement?
Well, Wayne is not here today, unfortunately, um, just wanted to let you guys know that there are some street signs, particularly in Forest Creek, that desperately need to be replaced, you cannot even see what street it says.
Very true.
Um, Wayne's kind of working on a, on a plan that, um.
I don't have any in my garage.
Oh, sure. Um, Wayne's working on a plan to kind of determine which signs are the worst, and like, which signs are kind of medium, and which signs are so good, so we can kind of phase, um, the replacement of them, because it is quite expensive to do that, so just want to let you guys know that we're sort of working on that.
I know he had said.
Well, in Forest Creek, literally all of them, almost.
Well, and last week, uh, I know that he had said that a lot of the newer ones that are the high reflective are all fading very quickly, so.
Yeah.
Quicker than the older.
The ones that stick around for a little while.
And supposedly that company is the one that everybody uses, so it's like, I think they have a lot of complaints about their street signs.
You'd think, yeah.
So maybe we need to find another vendor.
I'll see if, um, if there is another vendor.
Capitalism is best. I have what you need, I'm the only one that has it.
Right.
Must start making street signs.
Okay, that's not a bad.
Otherwise, that's what we're working on there.
I know where I can find one.
And don't steal the street signs.
Sam.
Sting them in my basement, shine flashlights at them all night long.
Put them back up?
See, check, see if they work or not.
Quality control.
Street sign tester.
Yeah, I think part of that is, what Wayne's doing is having the guys, um, because you have to do some of it at night and test the reflectivity of the signs and do stuff like that, so it's a work in progress, but we're going to be replacing some of the streets.
Uh, I would think if you couldn't see in the daytime, you probably can't see at night.
It's like to ta, yeah, well, to test the reflectivity, yeah, of what's left of it. It's like a, there's a whole huge hundred and twenty page plan, I think I was showing you, um, from the state, that tells you exactly how to replace the streets.
Well, that's because it's a bunch of, you know, state employees and nothing else to do, so.
Is there, and with this, do we get it from, is there no, uh, simple fixes or simple things that we can?
I don't know.
Instead of having to replace the whole thing, is there something that they have that we can use as a way to get it back up?
Like a sticker or those sort of things?
I, I, yeah, I don't know, like, it's, I think it's a question to ask.
Yeah, I'm having Wayne kind of do research and look into this, to see what would be the most economical way for us to do this, because the signs are so bad.
I need a timeframe?
Well.
Because it may be a cold day, you know, where.
Would be possible, I know it'd be a little spendier, that some of the signs, whether they be stop signs or the children at play ones, we look at the, um, solar light up ones, just so that there's a little more kind of, you know, just visibility wise.
So people on first can see they're going past this stuff, right?
Yes, that's, that's a particularly bad one that people don't like to stop at, uh, but even the, the children at play signs too, where they're just.
So, when I was reading through the plan that state has, they actually recommend taking down all of the children at play signs, because it doesn't help speed limit or theaters at all.
Oh, it really doesn't, because I mean, I live right at the end of a street, and I swear, I'm only, you know, two houses in, and people are already doing thirty by the time they hit my house. So it's just like, huh.
We pioneered putting speed bumps in when we lived in Seattle, in our neighborhood, and everybody figured out that if you hit them at fifty, you don't even feel them. So we went from twenty to fifty, so that didn't work at all.
That didn't work? Let's not do that there then.
It's bad enough hitting all the depressions from those main sewer lines in the roads, you know, that sink.
I just thought it'd be something to look at, that, and I know, like I said, I know they're spendier, but just if there's, maybe if there's a flashing light, then maybe it'll cause one less issue, maybe one more person will stop when they need to. So I'd really hate to see somebody fly down First Street, blow that stop sign, like I've seen many times, and I know the people who live there see it all the time, that somebody gets hit, and it, it'd be a little kid that would get hit too, so.
Emerson and Mindy is a bad one too. I put a little green guy out with a flag every time my daughter's out on her bike, and it's, nobody sees it, ever.
Throw on some spike strips.
Spike strips.
Got to go to the Forest Creek neighborhood for spike strips.
I don't know how that box of nails is going to fare.
Yeah, and then if you guys have other things that you think of with the street signs, um, you know, Wayne, Wayne should be back tomorrow or Wednesday.
Do we have to do it, I mean, if we change out a stop sign, you know, blinking stops at thirty, do we have to, does the county or the state have to get involved in that, or can we just do that ourselves?
I think you don't think they have to get involved, um, because it's just a city side, and it stops something, so.
And then one of those, um, I'll have to look at it more, but, um, at the last, uh, Gray County mayor's meeting, they brought out that there's possible funding for some roads and stuff with the sales tax in Wright County. Um, I thought it said something on there about that type of stuff, but I'll have to look at it again and give it to you, so. Just another possible funding, perhaps. Yeah, because they're increasing the budget for that, the sales tax program for all that, so. Anything else on the street signs? Do we have a motion adjourned?
So would.
I need a second.
Sandra F.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Solar.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, we're adjourned.